All right, Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Pace Snook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu. Ms. Seabacher.
Present.
Mr. Schibberdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
And Mr. Stone.
Present.
Seven council members present, one absent.
Okay, Pastor Mike, if you would, we have Mike Hall to do our invocation.
Join with me in prayer this evening. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for our city. We thank you for all of its employees, for its city council members. We thank you for our law enforcement, and we thank you for our firefighters, and our EMSs, and EMTs. We thank you for everyone in the city that makes it the great city that it is. I pray, Lord, for your direction and guidance tonight upon the council members, and I pray for those who are being sworn in tonight, and, Lord, that you'll just keep your hand upon them and minister to them. I thank you for each one of them and their faithful service tonight. And, Lord, just give them the direction and insight they need, and we give you all praise, all glory and honor, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike.
Very good, thank you, Mike. So tonight's meeting will be a little bit shorter than normal, kind of pomp and circumstance tonight, welcome out the new and usher out the old. Without further ado, we'll start with presentation and approval of our council meeting minutes for May 26 of 2020.
Motion to approve May 26 council minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections to be made or discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good, we'll move on to resolutions. We have one tonight. Councilman Stone, if you would, present resolution number 3375.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3375, a resolution certifying the votes cast in the municipal election held on June 2, 2020. I move to adopt resolution 3375 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We have our election results in front of us. Are there any questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good. Okay, this seems strange, but at this time, we will recess the sitting council.
Oh, Mayor, hold one moment. I think Councilman Moore had something he wanted to say.
Yes, sir.
Take a few minutes of your time.
Please, you got, you have the floor, sir.
I just would like to say that in 36 years, I have met a lot of wonderful people, and I would tell you that in my 36 years, if it wouldn't have been for, we've had a, I've had a good relationship following department here, so I'd like to say thank you to each one of y'all. I won't go by name, but I do, there's one thing that I never did learn in 36 years, and this goes to Kyle. Why is it every engineer holds on to the podium when we know it's gonna be a while? I was just curious, in 36 years, I, all of y'all were just rapt to that, and I know there was, but anyhow, and I, for anybody, someone asked me earlier, I've been through seven mayors, and so, it's been a, it's been a beautiful ride, and I thank you, you have a good person that's gonna take over for me. But like I said, just remember that in the working with everybody and being nice to them, you learn they can be help, great help to you in all departments, and I think the city of Fulton has one of the most wonderful staffs in all the departments I've worked with. And I must say, thank you to Carolyn, and, and for coming out and seeing me goodbye. She was my first 23 years of the city clerk, and Evelyn Hopkins was the first 12 years of my clerk life, so I've been through three city clerks, I guess, now that I'm not, so, but thank. But to all my constituents who retained me for 35, 36 years, thank you very much, and to the council, and to Mr. Johnson, and the other mayors, thank y'all very much. Been enjoying the time.
Be greatly missed. Who's gonna grip about the grass now?
Oh, no worry, I'll get it to you, Sarah, since you said that.
He'll be back.
All right, very good, thank you, Steve. At this time, we'll recess and reconvene. Okay, we'll call this meeting back to order. If you would, Madam Clerk, again, take a roll call.
Perfect. Ms. Pace Snook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Ms. Seabacher.
Present.
Mr. Schibberdecker.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington.
Present.
Mr. Braun.
Present.
Seven council members present and one absent.
Very good. At this time, we'll take comments from visitors. If you would, state your name and address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less. Do your best, be.
David Beaver, I live in Fort Worth, 1821, Hadley Lee Drive. In January, I think I requested permission, me representing the Independence Day Parade, and requested permission for the parade, and with the pandemic and everything, I just wanted to make sure we could still do this. I've visited with quite a few people, and the one thing I think we need to do is stress spreading out, social distancing and that for the parade, but it usually, from the time Chief Meyer crosses the bridge till he's at the end of Second Street, 40, 50 minutes, so take that into consideration. We're not gonna have people that long, and should be able to keep them spread out. But if you've got any questions, I'd like to be more than happy to answer them. This is the ninth year. We have changed our grand marshal. General Bagby was gonna be the grand marshal, and with flight, and trying to get here from DC, and his daughter's supposed to have a baby the next day, and being the grandpa's a lot more important in this parade, so we have put him off for a year at his request, and this year, we're going to honor all of the doctors, nurses, everyone in Callaway, EMS, first responders, that have taken charge of all this, and kept Callaway and Fulton somewhat better than a lot of the rest of the country. Anyway, if you've got any questions. So, where do we stand?
I would entertain a motion to approve the parade.
Motion to approve, as requested.
Are there any concerns? I know we had talked about participants being given some direction about social distancing. That'll be done, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we just need to make sure everyone's aware, like, hey, we still need to be staying apart from each other, social distance. Fourth of July parade is something a lot of people enjoy, and I think that that's something that we can still accomplish.
Well, when we started, this will be the, as I said, this will be the ninth one. I really thought it was gonna be not as big a deal as it's become. You know, it is our country's birthday, and the people of the county and the city have responded well, and I'd kinda hate to not do it, but I also want to make sure that everybody's aware, we need to spread out and social distance, and maybe someone can help us and just keep reminding a little bit in the paper, and anybody that, as we start putting it together, you, you have my guarantee, they're gonna be constantly reminded that we need to follow the health community's guidelines. Thank you all.
We appreciate it, David.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Let's have a parade. Very good. I will entertain any other comments from visitors. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move to item four, adoption of council rules of order and procedures. Madam Clerk?
Sure, so there really aren't any significant changes this year. I did highlight the changes. You'll see in the first section, this just clarifies if, for some reason, we hit another pandemic and the governor changes the election date, we now have something in our rules to cover that situation. And then, if you'll look back on page four, we did put a clarification in regarding emergency bills and how we can read those. I think in the past, there's been some confusion as to, do they have to be read entirely every single time, do they not? So, this clarification gives the council, I'm sorry, this gives the council clarification as to reading it entirely the first time, and then making a motion as to how you all feel is best to handle that. And those are the only changes for this year.
Thank you. So, we need a motion to adopt those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the rules of orders and the changes we've made. Are there any questions or concerns about the changes? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good, thank you. At this time, we'll elect a new deputy mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to nominate John Braun from Ward 3 as our deputy mayor.
I make a motion to na, to nominate Ballard Simmons as our deputy mayor.
Very good, I have two motions. Do I have a second?
I will second Mr. Braun's nomination.
Thank you.
And I'll defer, I, I'm deferring to John. Okay?
We're doing some interesting things here tonight.
So, thank you.
That got a little weird. No, that's cool. Great, so we have a motion and a second to elect Mr. Braun as our new deputy mayor. Are there any questions, concern, discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. And I'd also, at this time, like to thank Mr. Schibberdecker for his year of service doing that job. Appreciate, appreciate that, sure. And congratulations, John. Better answer when I call.
That's a question.
Now, thank you for serving for that. At this time, we'll consider the consent agenda. We have, really, just our appointments of our three-year terms on our boards and commissions. There's several of them here, I'll, I'll read through them right quick. We have Dave McDaniel for the Historic Preservation Commission, Brittany Abbott to Human Rights, Chris Garrett to the Park Board, Jane Hall to the Park Board, Don Masick to the Personnel Board, Whit McCroskey to the Personnel Board, Bill Ernst to the Personnel Board, Carolyn Laswell to the Personnel Board, Cindy Baker to the Personnel Board, and Jennifer Milligan to the Personnel Board.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. And again, I thank you all for being willing to serve on that. That's not a very high-paying gig, and we appreciate it, though. Means you care about your community. Okay, moving on, we have new business. Clay Caswell, if you would, come and give us an update on our Parks and Rec activities right now with COVID going on.
Splashpad opened on Friday, as expected, it's, it's been pretty busy. Pool also opened on Friday. We're operating the pool in two sessions per day, averaging about 41 swimmers per session. So, the attendance has, attendance has been pretty good. Staff is doing a lot of cleaning, a lot more cleaning than we've done in the past, so that's, we, we think that's helping. Saturday, we had our 15th annual youth fishing tournament, had 44 kids out there, they caught about 360 fish, lot of social distancing going on there. So, it was, it was a good time, good turnout. Last night, we started our youth baseball and softball leagues, and for the most part, the fans seem to be spreading out, and they're using their own chairs, and we spread the kids out in the dugouts as much as we can, so, so we're taking every safety precaution that we think's reasonable. Again, we've had a few complaints on things, but for the most part, everybody seems to be adjusting to all the changes and the, the new guidelines that we put in place. Any questions?
Clay, I have to say that I've seen a lot of activity down at Splashpad, and it looks like to me, folks are trying to keep their distance. I see parents spreading their kids out, so that, that's good to see, hopefully that'll stay that way. Is there any thought on opening up the playground equipment, or when that might happen?
I, I believe the council voted to open that on June 15.
June 15, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
I've been getting some questions on that, and I, I had forgotten that we set a date for that, thank you.
That's our plan.
There actually wasn't a vote on that, but if, if everyone's in agreement, you know, that's fine. I believe Mr. Schibberdecker did suggest that, but there wasn't an actual vote.
Gotcha. So, that, that might be appropriate? Do you still think that's an appropriate date?
Yeah, I mean, I, people are in the parks, people are using it. At some point, we're gonna have to depend on the, the community and the citizens to, to look after themselves and do things. We're still gonna go through the parks, we're gonna clean them, clean the playground equipment. We've never really done that unless it needed cleaning, so we'll probably get on a regular weekly schedule where we, we spread the equipment down.
Is that, would it be with, like, a weed sprayer type thing?
Yeah, something that can, we can go through in a hurry and, and cover a lot of area.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to officially move that we open the playground equipment on June 15 to coincide when our state of emergency for the city of Fulton expires.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stone, I have a motion and a second. Any other questions on that, concerns?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, sir.
On Clay, or is there gonna be any signs that will encourage the parents to, you know, they, they play at their own risk, but encourage them to bring something to sanitize, you know, areas where their kids are playing?
We haven't planned on it, but if that's something the council would like, we, we could put up some signage throughout the parks.
I think it'd be good for the parents, encourage parents to have some responsibility of knowing that they, they play at their own risk, but also have that, have a opportunity, they can bring some stuff that they may want to use theirself for their kids.
We can easily do that.
Good point, very good. Any other comments on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right. Thank you, Clay. Okay, we're moving on to council concerns. I'll start to my upper right, Mr. Schibberdecker.
I'm good, thank you.
And Mr. Washington.
I have none at this time.
All right. Mr. Simmons.
No items.
And Mrs. Seabacher.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Stone.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Braun.
Nothing at this time, thanks.
Wow, this is maybe happening.
It's not happening.
Okay, what's your concern?
I just wanted to say thank you to the citizens of Fulton for showing up on Saturday to, I think, our first protest, and also want to say thank you to the police officers that showed up to block off roads for us so that we could safely march through the streets. It was much appreciated.
Very good, yeah, that's great. Thank you for pointing that out. We, we had a real good turnout and a very good result from that, no violence, nothing broken, destroyed, none of the stuff that, that we've seen in other places, so we appreciate our law enforcement. The Callaway Ambulance District showed up from, for the heat reasons for, to be there to assist on that, so thanks for everyone helping out with that.
It was great to see so many, so many members of the council there also in support of our, our town.
Yes, Mayor, I do have, I'd like to personally thank Steve for your service and for representing Ward 4 as you did. I vote, as I said earlier, I voted for you several times, and thank you for the support our church and the areas that you have, you have done a great job. Thank you, appreciate that, just wanted to know. Thank you, Mayor, back to you.
Absolutely. Okay, moving on, we'll go with resolutions next. Councilman Schibberdecker, if you would, present resolution number 3376.
Yes, sir. Resolution number 3376, resolution of recognition and appreciation to Steve Moore for his 36 years of service as a city council member. I make a motion to adopt 3376 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Second.
So that was everyone, everyone seconding, okay. Just making sure. If you'll go ahead and go on down, and Mr. Moore? And actually, as he's going down, everyone that was in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
And was anyone opposed? Wonderful, thank you. Lot of no's.
Okay. Well-deserved resolution. Whereas Steve Moore has ably and conscientiously served the city of Fulton, Missouri, as a city councilman of the 4th Ward from April 13, 1984, to June 9, 2020. Throughout the course of Steve's 36 years of service, he served as deputy mayor, council liaison to- of Steve's 36 years of service, he served as deputy mayor, council liaison to a number of city boards and commissions, resolutions committee member of the Missouri Municipal League, and received his certified municipal official designation from the Missouri Governance Institute. And whereas Steve has outlasted nearly all city staff and elected officials, and has been a source of support, continuity, and stability for decades of Fulton citizens, and therefore, now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri as follows, that the mayor and the city council of the city of Fulton, Missouri, on behalf of the citizens of the city, desire to convey an expression of our sincere gratitude and appreciation for Steve's many years of faithful and valuable service rendered to this community, along with, with his innumerable contributions. On behalf of the citizens, he has served. The impact of Steve's time as a city councilman is undeniable, remarkable, and unparalleled. Section two, that the city of Fulton, Missouri, shall enter this resolution on the Journal of the City of the Council, and shall deliver a duly certified copy thereof to Steve Moore. This resolution adopted the 9th day of June 2020. That's it? All right. Thank you.
I think we were all having some microphone issues there as we all scattered. I know I tried to rip mine out of the thing, so, sorry for all the commotions.
Quite all right. Again, you'll be sorely missed, Steve. Appreciate your service, man.
Thank you very much.
We do not have ordinances. Madam Clerk, if you would do our announcements.
Certainly. The rescheduled spring cleanup week will take place June 15 through 19, along the regular pickup routes. No construction debris or tires will be accepted. The next meeting of the city council will be held Tuesday, June 23 at 6:30 PM.
Very good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All right.